Well, why is it when I say I'm a Vietnam veteran that that doesn't seem to affect you all much? You treat me the same, many times worse. And so I thought I'd explain to you why that bothers me so. When I had to go into the military and I say that because that's what happened, I didn't have a choice, I was drafted. And I was seventeen years old, young, afraid, never left Fort Worth, Texas in my life, and to be shipped in that area.
Mr. Hesput, your time is up.
What?
Your three minutes is up, sir.
Did I get the extended time?
Your three minutes is up. That is our operating procedures.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here and thank you for your service. Next, I'd like to welcome Bob Matthews. He is registered to speak under item one. Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk today. And all this is to start a conversation. I know you're not, you can't talk to me directly, at least the first time. My name is Bob Matthews. I live in Denton County. Seven six two five eight is my zip code. So I live in Denton County. I also have a business in Denton County. I'm the owner of All American Dogs. We provide animal control for twelve cities within the county. The reason I'm here is over the last, especially over the last month or so, but especially over the last two and a half, three years, we've been getting steadily more pressure on our facility as well as when we've had needed help from the county to help with a stray animal on our street. It's becoming increasingly more challenging. And I'm impacted by it more because of all the cities we have. When people can't get relief which they previously were able to get, they start dumping animals within our cities and the city of Denton and any city inside the county. And all this is, is a start of a conversation of how we can try to figure it out, how to make it better. I don't, I don't care the whys. I just want to fix it. And that's all my only goal is. I started this company to help first responders, to help residents, cities. And we service over thirty-seven cities and eight counties. So I'm here to help. And this is not a, I don't want your business. I want to try to help figure out how to make it better for the animals and for the residents. Case in point, we had a dog that was called in to dispatch, went to whoever's in the field. That person said, we can't take it, the shelter is full. I'm not aware of Denton, the city of Denton refusing to take an animal from the county. They gave them our information. They called us. They got very upset with us because we can't, I currently don't have enough runs to provide service to the county. We gave them different options, offered a courtesy post, all of that. They ended up dumping the dog, we believe it to be the dog, let me say that, over on Massey Road, Massey on three eighty, yesterday. So we, little puppy was dropped off in a kennel on the side of the road. And that's, my point is if the county is going to change what they used to provide, I'm okay with it. Just let everybody know, so everyone knows how to act, how to, how to change. Like for me, I'm going to be instituting policy changes in all of our cities. So I will no longer take animals from people that live outside the city limits. I used to only care about where the animal was found. That was my only criteria. But because of what's going on, I have to change because we don't have the capacity to take on all the animals that people are bringing in going, oh, I found it on, I found it in Crum, I found it in Argyle, I found it in wherever, whatever city they're saying, oh, but I'm a resident, my address is in the county. We can't do that anymore. That effect will go into April first. But this is a start of a conversation. Thank you for your time. I appreciate you and have a great day. And thank you for doing what you do. I truly appreciate you. It's a hard job.
Well, thank you for what you do.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yes, sir.
All right. Let's go to item three A, which is approval of a resolution recognizing Tony Hodges' retirement. And Tony, I believe, is with us. Tony, if you'll come forward. Don't be bashful. Good morning.
Good morning.
We're glad to have you here today with us. So we'll read this proclamation and entertain any comments from you as well, all right? Sound good? I promise you get the last word, is what I say. So this is a resolution honoring Tony Hodges for over twenty-one years of service to Denton County. And the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, during a regular session on the twenty-seventh day of February twenty twenty-four, considered the following resolution. Whereas Tony Hodges has been a loyal employee with the Denton County Sheriff's Office since June the twelfth, two thousand and two, and will retire on February the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, with over twenty-one years of service. Whereas Tony began her career as a detention officer assigned to support, to the support section, Tony worked in various sections, including the front desk, records, and bonds prior to her promotion to detention officer two on April the eighteenth, twenty twelve. Tony was then promoted to a records manager on April the fifteenth, twenty fifteen, where she finished out her career. Whereas Tony's supervisor states she has been a great asset to the Denton County Sheriff's Office. In twenty fifteen, Tony was asked to take on the task of records manager when the sheriff's administration at the time decided to create a sheriff's office records department. As a manager of the newly created Denton County Sheriff's Office Records Department, she could build from the ground up and learn all the aspects of public records along with many other duties that this newly created department would take on. Tony implemented, organized, and managed how the Denton County Sheriff's Office Records Department operates today. A lot of this was trial by fire, but she was always willing to make it work and get the job done. With great honor and recognition of her service and dedication to the people of Denton County and through the state of Texas, we wish her the best in her retirement. Whereas Tony plans to enjoy retirement by spending more time with her grandkids and traveling. And now therefore, it be resolved the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby extend to Tony Hodges our sincere and grateful appreciation for her dedicated service to Denton County. We congratulate Tony on her well-end retirement and extend our best wishes to her for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Done in open court this the twenty-seventh day of February twenty twenty-four upon a motion made by?
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any comments? I would like to go first and just say thank you. That's two, over two decades of service to Denton County, and I want to thank you for investing your, your time and energy and your career here with us and making it a better place and really being a trailblazer in the sheriff's office and setting up that new department. So I want to thank you for your innovation and creativity with that.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working for Denton County.
Perfect. Good.
Thank you for your service. We certainly appreciate it. In times like these when it's hard to get employees or people to work, and the fact that you've stayed this long, it's a testament to who you are and what you have contributed to the sheriff's office. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments?
Yeah, unfortunately, I never got to meet you until we got in the elevator this morning. But she has a pretty good crew here, if you don't mind. Judge, if you want to introduce your friends and, that are here to support you from Denton County. None of them wanted to let her go. They all made that clear.
Yes.
But that's great. You know, there again, it's a testament to Denton County that, you know, not only can you work here, but you can have some really good friends here at the same time.
Thank you. I was about to call you up.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
It's okay. I was letting the court go first.
Sure.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Shut up the mic. Ah, here we go.
Very good.
It's just amazing to me how long you've been with the county and how young you look for having been through all that.
Thank you.
Whatever you're taking, let me know. But I just, I think when we have an employee like yourself that has been with the county all these years, we're so blessed, we're so fortunate, and we're so glad that you're going to have a great retirement, and I know you will. Thanks for all you've done and all you're going to be doing with your grandkids and your traveling.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
All right. We've got some special guests here. Did y'all want to say anything?
Just that, I'm Stacy Hurd. I've been with the county for twenty-two years.
All right. You give seniority on her.
Yeah.
I love Tony. I'm going to miss her. She was an excellent boss to work for. There won't be another one like her, as I finally call her Tina. I'm going to miss Tina.
All right. Well, good.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we have a motion. Don't run off, Wilson.
You'll get off that easy.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're still not finished.
I'm trying to rush. That's true. I don't know what to do. Thank you. Thank you. You appreciate it. Thank you.
Be blessed, babe.
Don't give your phone to Eric, he'll take your picture. Inside. You'll wish you would have done it if you didn't.
Come on in.
You're short.
Not going to get down.
We're losing you.
Good to cry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you.
You know, so.
It's hard to replace those.
Good for them.
That experience.
All right. Let's do another special presentation. This is item three B, a presentation of the certification of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the annual comprehensive financial report, the ACFR. I've been doing this so long, I remember it was called a CAFR, you know, they've changed the name, by the Government Finance Officers Association. This is GFOA, and any appropriate action. We have our county auditor Jeff May with us today. Good morning, sir.
Thank you, Judge. Today, as you said, I wanted to announce that we have received the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the government officers, I'm sorry, from the Government Finance Officers Association. And this award is a, an award to Denton County, not to the auditor's office. And I wanted to point that out because this is a team effort. It takes cooperation all across the county to achieve this, including from MUCAS. And this certificate, it's awarded, it's actually, it says, "The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in government accounting and financial reporting." And GFOA, or the Government Finance Officers Association, issued around forty-three hundred of these awards out of the eighty-five thousand local governments in the country. So this is a top tier, but Denton County has received this, this is the thirty-ninth time.
Wow.
So Denton County has a tradition of excellence in financial reporting. And as you know, our budget officer will be presenting his soon. And anyway, I just wanted to acknowledge the people that have helped to achieve this. First, I have my staff here. Stand up.
Yes. Let's give them a big hand.
And a lot of these people don't really realize they're helping us to get this done because they're working on the details, as well as people across the county. So I greatly appreciate y'all's leadership and cooperation at getting this done, as well as your integrity in our financials across the county. And also, let's see, I did mention the thirty-ninth time. And I wanted to mention, this is very important on our bond rating too. One of the criteria that they look at on our bonds is financial management. And Denton County has a very high, I guess, image or reputation.
Reputation, yeah.
For financial management. So anyway, I wanted to bring this, even though I get to hang it in my office, as an award for Denton County.
For everybody.
I greatly appreciate everyone.
Well, congratulations, first of all. Congratulations to the team and auditor's office. And as you said, Jeff, to the county, you know, because it is very much a team, a team effort. But somebody's got to pull it all together and be responsible. So we appreciate all y'all's good efforts each and every day throughout the year. And it does speak to the county's reputation and credibility as we go out to the bond market and to other entities as they evaluate our financial management. So, so thank you. Thirty-nine years, that's great. That's great. So congratulations. Any other comments, members?
Thank you and to the staff and to Denton County. And thank you, we could not do it without you. And thirty-nine years, that's same age I am, so I certainly appreciate.
And holding.
Yeah, and holding that you all have been doing this since I was, I came in. So I appreciate you and keep up the good work. You know, your work, your good work does not go unnoticed. We appreciate you and everyone all over the county do. This county doesn't work without finances. Thank you.
Let's do a picture with the, with the group here.
Judge, could I?
Yes, absolutely. Love to hear from you.
Jeff, you are spoiling us. All the, all the departments in Denton County are really spoiling us because you do your job so well and you get recognized by national organizations. And so I just think Denton County is leading the way. We have a whole lot to be proud of, and we've got a whole lot of good examples that I hope the other counties are looking at. Thank you for what they're doing.
Congratulations. It's a great work. I'm so impressed with what y'all do.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. Very good. Okay, let's do a group picture real quick.
I understand. Get the mail.
I think you see it. That's the question.
Yeah, I think I've got those places real quick. I told these things.
All right, here we go.
You can't see. Okay, what about you? Um, good evening. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, viewers. Yes.
Okay. Let me see if there's anything I need, anyone I needed to get out of here. Michelle, we going to stay for the whole meeting, or do you want me to go ahead and do your item? Okay. Let's go to item thirteen C, which is approval of waiver and penalty and interest on account two eight 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 three eight D E N, and any appropriate action.
Moved to approve.
With a motion by Commissioner Falconer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item two A, this is approval of order-making appointments and any appropriate action. Item two B is approval of the interdepartmental transfers and any appropriate action. Item two C is approval of payroll. Item two D is approval of budget amendment request one zero zero eight three zero for facilities management to transfer thirty-two thousand for miscellaneous county building maintenance to service contracts to fund fire prevention and fire alarm contract overages due to unforeseen increases in usage. Item two E is approval of budget amendment request one zero zero eight four zero for the purchasing department to transfer seven thousand two hundred dollars for an apartment improvement fund unappropriated contingency to professional services to hire a moving company to fund the furniture, to move furniture to the Holtzer Building for the Department of Transportation and Engineering and County Administration Department. Item two F is approval of budget amendment request one zero zero eight five zero for Constable Precinct Six to transfer four thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars from fuel to vehicle care to cover the cost of a transmission repair as well as anticipated shortages for the remainder of the fiscal year. Item two G is approval of budget amendment request one zero zero eight six zero for the criminal district attorney to transfer three thousand dollars from administrative supplies to dues and subscriptions. The transfer is needed to ensure there are enough funds to pay for the state bar dues for attorneys and any appropriate action. Item two H is approval of budget amendment request one zero zero eight seven zero for the public health department indigent care to transfer three thousand three, three hundred dollars from indigent medical care to technology software services to fund an unexpected fee for eligibility and claim software for the cost of editing patient application forms. And item two I is approval of the road superintendent report for January twenty twenty-four. This is submitted for recording purposes only and any appropriate action. All right. Let me go, let's now go to item five A, back to our auditor. This is approval of the bill report, payments from CSCD Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT, interest in DA forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have no chances today. Recommend approval as presented.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve it as presented by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six A, approval of specifications, authority to advertise ITB two four two eight zero one. This is the employee appreciation event.
Move to approve.
With a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any comments?
And I've got comments.
All right.
The sob will, did you, is this for any particular day, or is this?
No.
Is this just to get the contract?
Commissioner, in the specifications, we're requesting a Saturday in October.
Yeah. Okay.
That's what it should.
That's fine. Okay, thanks.
All right. Do we have a, we have a motion and second? Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six B, approval of renewal of bid two 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 six eight two lubricants and oils to Southwest Distributing Company.
They'll move.
With a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six C, approval of award of ITB two three two seven nine three. This is window washing services to DNA Building Services Incorporated.
I'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six D, approval of award of ITB two three two seven nine two Surface Treatment Aggregate Type D Grade Three and Four to DFW Materials LP.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six E, approval evaluation committee's recommendation to rank Geotech Engineering, LLC, formerly DNS Engineering, as most qualified firm for RFSQ two three two seven nine eight Geo-Technical Engineering Services, Denton County Court's building expansion.
They'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six G, approval of award of RFP two three two seven eight seven. This is the Charlie Colchilla replacement to DMI Corporation. This is Decker Mechanical, any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six A, approval of award of ITB two three two seven nine three. This is window washing services to DNA Building Services Incorporated.
I'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six D, approval of award of ITB two three two seven nine two Surface Treatment Aggregate Type D Grade Three and Four to DFW Materials LP.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six E, approval evaluation committee's recommendation to rank Geotech Engineering, LLC, formerly DNS Engineering, as most qualified firm for RFSQ two three two seven nine eight Geo-Technical Engineering Services, Denton County Court's building expansion.
They'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six F, approval of the evaluation committee's recommendation to rank Leaf Engineers as most qualified firm for RFSQ two three two seven eight six Engineering Services and electrical, for electrical and generator upgrades.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six G, approval of award of RFP two three two seven eight seven. This is the Charlie Colchilla replacement to DMI Corporation. This is Decker Mechanical, any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven A, approval of budget amendment request one zero zero seven four zero to increase revenue and allocate expenditures for the community diversion coordinator grant in amount of sixty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars and allocate sixteen thousand one hundred and two for the grant contingency as a county managed for a total of seventy-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven B, approval of budget amendment request one zero zero eight two zero for the county jail to transfer four hundred and one thousand nine hundred and six dollars from salary assistance to overtime cash option outside the budget amendment and human resources overtime policy as recommended by the budget office for the jail to continue to operate as mandated by the State Commission on Jail Standards.
They'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight A, this is a report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials, Gestapo.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one new hire in the county clerk, one new hire in adult probation, one promotion in juvenile probation, eleven new hires in the sheriff's office, ten of those are detention officers, and one promotion in the tax office. That's it for this week.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Next, let's go to item ten A, approval of the Prose Prosper Edition Final Platte Lots One and Two Block One. This is nineteen point three five acres located in Commissioner Precinct One.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen A, approval of the United Way of Denton County Incorporated funding requests to fill the allocation of American Rescue Plan for housing assistance, nonprofit assistance, and food assistance due to COVID-19 and any appropriate action.
They'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen B, approval of the completion of continuing education hours by Commissioner Diane Edmondson for the calendar year twenty twenty-three as required by section eighty-one point zero zero two five of the Texas Local Government Code and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion?
Congrats.
Yes, congratulations on your schooling. Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen D, this is approval of a resolution opposing the creation of the White Oaks Municipal Utility District. And we have a resolution here. Commissioner Williams, did you want to make any introductory comments?
Yes, thank you, Judge. I appreciate everybody taking a look at this today. This, very rarely do we oppose when it comes to these kind of creations. But I had well over a hundred local citizens come and had a meeting and they were, had multiple reasons to oppose this. And so obviously, with what the citizens are requesting, that's why I put this on the agenda and think that that is the correct thing for us to do.
Perfect. Perfect.
Thank you, Judge.
You bet. This is a resolution opposing the creation of the White Oaks Municipal Utility District of the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, during a regular session on the twenty-seventh day of February twenty twenty-four, considered the following resolution. Whereas the Denton County Commissioners Court received notification on October the twelfth, twenty twenty-two, from the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality that an application for the creation of the White Oaks Municipal Utility District had been filed. Whereas all the land proposed to be included in this district is located outside the corporate limits of any municipality and is located entirely within Denton County. Whereas a portion of the proposed White Oaks mud is located in an area governed by the Lake Ray Roberts Land Use Ordinance, whose authority is granted by the state of Texas via the enactment of Texas Local Government Code Chapter two thirty-one. Whereas the Lake Ray Roberts Land Use Ordinance governs any structures and land located within the area, the regulations have been designed to provide safety from fire and flood, prevent undue concentration of population, lessen congestion on roadways, prevent overcrowding of land, and the conservation of space. And whereas the creation of the White Oaks mud will have an unreasonable effect on one or more of the following: land elevation, subsistence, groundwater level within the region, the recharge capability of the groundwater source, natural runoff rates and drainage, water quality, and total tax assessments on the land located within the district and in the Lake Ray Roberts, in direct violation of Lake Ray Roberts Land Use Ordinance. And now therefore be resolved by the Denton County Commissioners Court by virtue of the authority vested in us to hereby state that for the foregoing reasons it is in the best interest of Denton County and our citizens to oppose the creation of White Oaks Municipal Utility District. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, the chair will second, any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Judge. I'd asked not all a hundred people to come here because they were sending me emails saying, do I need to come, and I said, no, no, please.
We got it.
We'll, we'll take care of it. Otherwise, this place would be a little more packed than normal.
Yeah, good. Thank you. Next is fourteen A, approval of the addendum number one to the master agreement for architectural services between Denton County, Texas, and Park Hill for Hulcher Building B entry ramp. This is RFPQ two three two seven four five in the amount of seventeen thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars with reimbursable expenses, not to exceed two thousand three hundred dollars with funding to come from the permanent improvement fund remodeling order line item number eight zero six six five zero nine zero one zero is recommended by the Denton County Purchasing Director.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Hey, Judge, I'm sorry. Thirteen C, did we get thirteen C? Did I miss that?
Yes. It was the first item we did.
Oh, that's right, that's why I was so, okay, sorry, Judge.
Francis French was here.
Yep, that's right.
No problem. Next is fourteen B, approval of number one, an amendment to the farm and ranch contract of Virginia L. Singleton, the trustee of the Virginia L. Singleton Revocable Trust, and Mary Osh Linenschmidt, the trustee of the Linenschmidt Revocable Trust, a seller in Denton County, Texas, as buyer for the purchase of real property described as one hundred and six point six eight four acres. And an updated boundary survey previously called one hundred five point three three acres fronting the south side of Myron Road and the east side of I-35 located in the J-Air Survey Abstract Two, Denton County, Texas, the property for the purchase price of eighteen million four hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars and sixteen cents, and the original purchase price was eighteen million four hundred, uh, three hundred and fifty-two thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and is now adjusted by an updated boundary survey. Plus all applicable closing costs, including title, insurance policy, boundary survey, and real estate commission payable to Newland Real Estate Incorporated. And two, grant authorization to proceed with closing and approval for the Denton County judge to sign all necessary closing documents. And three, with funding to come from the permanent improvement funds and any appropriate action, the chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion?
Yeah, Judge, if you don't mind, I just, I think it's imperative that the citizens understand why, obviously, we've decided to spend this kind of money. And we were fortunate to get the tax for the hot tax for our hotel to help us with an event center, and that's such an exciting thing for Denton County. And this land will help us be able to achieve our goals. We have, now this will put us at, is it approximately three or four hundred acres? Not including-
Three hundred.
Three hundred? Okay, little over three hundred acres, which will allow us to have a very nice event center at some point here in Denton County, and which is going to bring a substantial amount of tax dollar and revenue to the county as well. So thank you, and I just wanted to mention that real quick, Judge.
Perfect, good, thank you. Yeah, it's part of, this is going to be a wonderful legacy project that generations of Denton County residents are going to enjoy. So this is all part of assembling the land.
Yes, sir.
So, and the family is, and I will say, I've met with the family, and they're very excited about coming to the public. And they're a long, multi-generational Denton County family, and they're excited about the future uses of it. So they had lots of, lots of potential buyers.
Yeah.
But they're willing to sell it to us. So excited about that. All right, we have a motion as second, any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen C, approval of a memorandum of understanding between the town of Flower Mound in Denton County, Texas, to set forth the terms and understanding between Denton County Office of History and Culture and the town regarding handling historical artifacts by the town of Flower Mound. Motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Peggy, did you, did you want to add anything, or did you want to? Thank you, Peggy, for all your work on this.
This has been two years in the making.
Yes.
But we're, we're so excited because the town of Flower Mound now has a historical commission, and I'll be working with them. I'm going to be a liaison to their commission. And we're going to be working on oral histories, we're working on collections, all sorts of projects. So it's very exciting, there's, they're a great group of people that are enthusiastic about preserving our history and heritage. Thank you.
Peggy, you need to go talk to Carol Gohanke about how she got the post office there. She worked tirelessly to get the-
Yeah.
I'm serious, how'd she got the Flower Mound post office?
And she's a donor of ours.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, great.
Yeah, she has a lot of the Flower Mound land, and rebellion and so forth.
Yeah, Carol Gohanke.
Hi, Carol, if you're watching. All right, we have a motion and a second, any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to item seventeen, which is community updates. This is updates from Commissioners' Court members. We'll start with Precinct One, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Judge. Just two quick things here, this is kind of a little shout-out to Denton Fire Department. Denton Fire Chief Hedges ran and completed the Cowtown Marathon last weekend in Fort Worth, so he did something I would never be able to do. And then Denton Deputy Fire Marshal Gary Willman, he was previously a competitor on American Ninja Warriors, and he is going, his next big challenge will be the Boston Marathon, and he's already raised twelve thousand five hundred dollars from his charity for, to provide his prosthetic leg, which, that's impressive in itself.
Yep.
His leg was amputated in two thousand eighteen after knee replacement surgery complications. So, yeah, we'll pray for that, obviously, but, you know, that's pretty impressive to have all that and then do the Boston, I can't do Boston Marathon with two reg, you know,
Right.
complete legs, if you will.
Right.
So that's all I have, Judge.
Perfect, good, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Falconer?
Yes, thank you, Judge. So, let's see, I'll start with the colony, still having their income tax preparation help, and that is at the library, and February twenty-seventh, end thirty-two. And, let's see, in Little Elm, the Big Easy in Little Elm. And that's at the Little Elm Park, March second, five to nine. And then Frisco has the Grand Night for Singing at the Theater Frisco, that's the Black Box Theater at Frisco Discovery Center. That is March first, from eight to nine-thirty. And then Carrollton's got a couple of events here. The Texas Holden Event, which is today at one P.M. at the Senior Center. The Bug Walk with the Texas Master Naturalists, that's at the Elm Fort Nature Center, and that's March second, noon to one. And then finally, their big Tex Fest, which is always a lot of fun. That is March second, from three to nine in downtown Carrollton. Thanks.
Perfect, great. Mr. Mitchell.
Well, Flower Mound is still having the Market at Parker Square in Fredin I passed by there this past Sunday, and there are food trucks and all kind of fun things to do. And we were on our way to eat, and I, well, he told me, sometimes we need to stop by there and eat. So they're still going on, ten A.M. to two. So let's, Flower Mound people, and Louisville and Denton County people, let's go out and have lunch at Flower Mound Parker Square. Holland Village Coffee with the Mayor, March fourth, eight-thirty A.M. to nine-thirty P.M. At City Hall. In Louisville, we have the Castle Hill Village Shops every Saturday, nine to one. And we have income tax preparation, March second, at the Louisville Library. First Saturday Nature Walk, March second, at Leila. And also AARP Tax Aid, March fourth, at the Louisville Library, and that's all I have.
Perfect, good. Commissioner Edmondson.
Well, first of all, let me remind everybody that this is a leap year. So we've got February twenty-ninth on the calendar this year, but not normally. So take advantage of that. When I was, a long time ago, in high school, leap year meant that the girls could ask the boys out instead of waiting for the guys to do that. So as far as I'm concerned, the girls just go right ahead with that. I think it sounds like a good idea. I'd also like to remind everyone that early voting is still going on for our very important primary elections, both Democrat and Republican have their primaries. And the early voting is unique in that you can vote anywhere in the county during the early voting times. That will cease a week from Friday, and then we'll go to our election day on March fifth. So everybody, get good information about who you want to support, and then please go and vote. In Denton, we're going to have a Kids Rock, and that's a parents' night out on the first, from seven to eleven, at the Civic Center. And then also, on the second, they're going to have Denton Parks and Rec Open House again at the Civic Center. And then in Roanoke, they're going to go fishing in the park on March second. So y'all take advantage of these great community activities and have a good time, and don't forget to vote.
Perfect. We had a couple I wanted to mention. And that's a week from today, from eight-thirty to three, ServDent will be hosting free breast cancer screening and mammograms for the Moncreeps Mobile Screening Clinic. That'd be great for people to go who qualify, and it's for, you can check it out. More details at one eight hundred four oh five seven seven three nine. That's one eight hundred four oh five seven seven three nine to check on your qualifications and to schedule an appointment. I think that'd be a great thing. And then we have our Denton Community Market opening this Saturday over at the Historical Park. We've been doing that for years and years, Peggy, and hosting them here. We're, and that's from nine to one at our Historical Park. So we're happy to have them back again for another season. All right, let's go to executive session. We have a few items on here for executive session today. One is fifteen A, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven one one A, Consultation with Attorney in a Closed Meeting When the Governmental Body Seeks Advice of its Attorney About Pending Litigation Regarding Cause Number two three one zero 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 two four three one. This is Cami Real Property Trust and Crossroad Set Again versus the North Texas Tollway Authority in Denton County, Texas. This is currently pending in the four hundred and thirty-first Judicial District Court of Denton County, Texas. This is fifteen B, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven one A, Consultation with Attorney in a Closed Meeting When the Governmental Body Seeks Advice of its Attorney About Contemplated Litigation Regarding a Claim by Antrone Vicks and any appropriate action. Fifteen C, or Texas Government Code five five one zero seven four A one, Personal Matters in Closed Meeting to Liberate the Appointment, Employment Evaluation, Reassignment Duties, Discipline or Dismissal of a Public Officer or Employee for the following position, aid to Commissioners' Court. And fifteen D, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven four five A one, Personal Matters Affecting the County Advisory Body, Closed Meeting to Liberate the Appointment, Employment Evaluation, Reassignment Duties, Discipline or Dismissal of a Member of an Advisory Body to, with the Child Protective Services Board. And it is nine fifty-two, and we, nine fifty-two, and we are in executive session.